Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. We will start with Pastor Dan Blair. We'll give an invocation.
Thank you very much. Grateful to be here. Let us pray. Oh, Lord God, we are so thankful for this day you've given us. We pray that you would give us grateful hearts to recognize this day for the gift that it is. As this body gathers to do the work of this city, we ask you'd give them wisdom, give them guidance, so they might do what is best, what is most just, what is most fair for everyone. And we bring this to you in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much, sir. Item number three, oath of office for our new city manager. Stand right there. Oh, yeah. Okay. Aye, state your name.
Aye, John Perry.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Carolina
And the Constitution of the State of North Carolina.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
As city manager, so help me God.
As city manager, so help me God.
Thank you. All right. Next item, adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Done.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Item number five, vote to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone comments from attendees tonight? Okay. New business then. Planning board applications. I believe McKenzie is going to handle that for us.
Yes, we had one of our planning board members, Valerie Davis. She resigned, and then David Quick rotated off, so we've currently got three vacancies. And the applications are in front of you. We've got two open city seats, one is an alternate, and then we have one ETJ alternate open as well.
Madam Mayor, I think it would be a good idea, since we have three vacancies, if we opened this process of obtaining applications for maybe a couple of weeks, since we've made this known in a public meeting now, and they're aware of their vacancies, that anybody that might be interested, rather than just going back to the same file that we've used repeatedly and maybe get something fresh. Not that we don't have qualified applications, but I think since, as I said, this was made as a result of this public meeting, we should take advantage of the opportunity to see if we've stimulated some other interest. And then we can, if we make them accept applications until the end of February, then we can review the applications and be prepared to make appointments the next meeting.
So you'd like to do a continuance?
Yeah.
That'd have to be voted on.
Mm-mm.
You're making a motion?
I make a motion that we continue this process accepting applications until the last day of February, and that we review applications and vote on these vacancies at the next city council meeting, which will be the second meeting in, second Tuesday in March.
Well, I make a motion. We go ahead and handle it tonight.
We got a motion.
Well, we have a motion.
We already have a motion. We have to vote on it first.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
All right. So three ayes, one no. Okay. Let's see. Item number eight, streetscape presentation.
I don't know if your mic's on, John.
We do have Withers and Ravenall here to give the presentation of the streetscape. They have done a ton of work on this. I reviewed it myself, and it looks really great. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they bring to the council tonight.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of the council, appreciate you having me here tonight. My name is John Blasko. I am a landscape architect and senior project manager with Withers Ravenall, based out of Cary, North Carolina. I work out of our Raleigh office. But again, appreciate you all having me tonight to talk through the streetscape plan. Honestly, we had hoped to be in front of you maybe a month or two sooner, but we had some personnel changes in our office, so we had to work through that. You know, that can always be a little challenge, but here we are, and we are excited to be presenting this. So I'll back up a little bit. I'm not going to dive right into the meat of it quite yet, but just a little context, you all know your downtown very well. You know it way better than I do. But what we have here, here are some just little, quick little sections. I can pull up Google Street View as well, but Main Street at this very southern end. You know, we've got parallel parking along the street for the majority of the section. We're looking at, let's flip over to Google Street View, just to give us a little bit more context. So our study corridor really is from down here at the southern end to make kind of the southeastern end of Main Street, up through a few blocks. We know that what we have here is a lot of angled parking. The parking is at a very sharp angle. The spaces aren't very deep. As I drove through tonight, I actually saw a car that was parked up on the curb. Other cars that were parked down there, we're hanging into the travel lane. So we've got some issues we want to fix. As we dive into our street view, as you well know, we've got a lot of situations where the storefronts aren't ADA accessible. You've got to go up a set of stairs. This is probably being the worst-case scenario. But as we go up, we've got steps, you know, it may be a matter of a couple inches. It may be a matter of a couple steps. That side's, you know, is probably worse than this side. But again, we've got some ADA accessibility issues, and we know that's a big deal. We've got cars parking out into the street. You can see here on the street view, those cars are hanging out. So what can we do to sort of help improve the streetscape, make it more pedestrian-friendly, make it safer, make it more viable for the businesses that are there? Let me flip back over. So again, just kind of looking through, we did prepare a report, which I'm not going to go through page by page. I think you've all had probably a chance, I think it was in your packet. If not, then, I do have it up here, so we can go back through it after the presentation, if there's any further questions, but. So let me kind of skip ahead. We went through, back in the spring of last year, we went through a site analysis. Staff were down here walking the corridors, meeting with staff and stakeholders to kind of learn about the different issues with the streetscape. We presented several options, some ideas to the community, got a lot of feedback over the summer, took that feedback, and really started to kind of dive into what our final concepts were. So these are just some quick little snippets of different ideas we put forth. You know, angled on one side, angled parking on one side, parallel on the other, parallel on both. A lot of different ideas, looked at the railroad crossing as well. Definitely want to make that pedestrian-friendly as we go through it. So looking at different opportunities here for, you know, what can we do in those areas where we've got a lot of grade change between the front door of the business and the sidewalks, looking through a lot of different ideas. Again, I'm just going to breeze through this real quick. We can come back to it as need to. There's Abby with our staff, you know, meeting with the community, going over some ideas, some plans, kind of giving some background to the story. Really believe that community engagement is important to our process. We, you know, we really value that. It's not just checking the box for us. So we, you know, we take that information very seriously, take that, incorporate it into our work throughout the process. So getting to the final master plan, which is probably the most exciting part. So what we heard a lot of is people didn't like parallel parking. They wanted angled parking, which we totally understand, you know, it's easier to pull into. Parallel parking is a pain. No one likes to do it. You open your car door into the street. You know, angled parking gives you a lot better safety in terms of exiting and entering a car. It does create some safety challenges backing out. Thankfully, a lot of cars now have backup cameras, which makes that a little better, but still. So all that said, you'll see here, this is the very southern end of Main Street. What are we showing? Parallel parking. And the reason why we're showing that is because, again, we've got a lot of ADA challenges. In order to fix the ADA challenges, we need a lot more sidewalk. Basically, what we're proposing is along the front edge of the building, you know, ramping that sidewalk up, you know, to match the storefronts, to match the doors. So that way, as you're walking up or down Main Street in a linear fashion, you're basically at each door level, so you don't have steps to go up anymore, really solving a lot of the ADA problems. Well, in order to do that, we've got to be able to get back down to the street level, because we're not changing the street. We could talk about changing the street grade, but then you get DOT involved, and you've got years and years worth of process, you've got exponential costs, and at the end of the day, they're probably still going to say no. So we tried to keep them out of it as much as possible. So really, what we're doing, again, you know, sloping up here to meet the doors, again, on the both sides, and then for a section, be able to slope back down to the curbs. So unfortunately, that doesn't give us much room for parallel parking. I'm, I'm sorry, for angled parking within this first kind of block. But what that does do, aside from fixing the ADA issues, is it gives us a really nice streetscape. It gives us an opportunity to have a walking zone. It gives us an opportunity to have sort of a sitting zone. So when you do pull into your parallel spot, you open your door. You're not walking, you're not opening your door right into the travelway of the pedestrians. It gives an opportunity to provide, you know, benches and seating, different kinds of seating. It gives the opportunity for an improved vegetated landscape with street trees or under-story trees. It allows us to create these sort of gathering spaces that can be elevated. You could put benches, you could put two-top, four-top chairs out there. So if you had a restaurant, you could easily expand out onto the street for a street park, for a street dining. You can start to see that here in these sections. So this is as if you were walking. Again, you've got a nice 10-foot wide sidewalk, comfortable for three people side by side, by side, maybe even four. You've got this sort of zone here, the six-foot zone, again, for benches, for street trees. It gives you the opportunity, you know, to open your car door and not be in the pedestrian travelway. We've got our standard eight-foot parallel spaces and our 22-foot wide travelway. In these areas where we have these raised seating areas, it does take away that parking, but the trade-off is it gives you a really nice elevated area where you could do seating, outdoor seating, outdoor dining, kind of hangout space. This one down here is without that. So again, that 16-foot wide sidewalk, eight-foot parallel, standard 22-foot travel lane, eight-foot parallel, and so forth. So that's sort of that first block, again, from, you know, down by the railroad tracks up to Raleigh Road. And then as we move further up, we start to be able to get back into the angled spaces. So as we get closer to Town Hall, we have a lot more opportunity where the businesses aren't right up against the street. We don't have the ADA issues that we have in that first block of the more historic section of the downtown. So here, you can see, we're able to incorporate more of the angled spaces. This also gives us the opportunity to create these sort of bumpouts at the intersections. It makes it safer for pedestrians. They have a much shorter road to cross. They're crossing the 22-foot travel lanes, as opposed to 22 feet plus another 20 feet on each side for parking. So you're crossing 22 feet instead of 40-some feet. So it's a much safer pedestrian experience. It'll actually slow cars down. As the road gets a little narrower, cars will just naturally slow down. And that also helps provide this sort of gateway feel into the, a little bit more of the historic area. On the, kind of the northern eastern side of the street, so again, the opposite side of the street that we're standing on now, as you all know, there are a lot of businesses that have a lot of driveway cuts. We want to be respectful of their access. We don't want to, you know, take away their access, but we also decided, or, you know, had the idea that maybe they don't need a 50-foot wide driveway that touches Main Street. Can we kind of neck that down a little bit? Give them adequate access, and then still provide us a little bit of extra parking, a little bit more of that streetscape feel, again, with the areas to sit, areas for street trees, for a much more enjoyable pedestrian experience. And then as you continue further north-northwest, we get more into the angled parking throughout the corridor. And then we also looked at Hamlet Avenue as part of our, before I get to Hamlet, sorry. So again, just, again, continuing further north along Main Street. Again, buildings are set further back, so we can have a nice, you know, 10-foot wide sidewalk, which again, is very comfortable for pedestrian access. You can pass a couple people side by side, plenty of rooms, you know, for strollers and wheelchairs and whatnot. And then, again, still maintaining that angled parking that the community is excited to have. And then, you know, again, just thinking about what kind of different materials can we use? You know, standard sidewalk, you know, concrete paving, and then these bumpouts, can we use some, maybe a little special concrete pavers, or some sort of other paving material to help just, you know, separate it from the rest of the sidewalk? You know, kind of signify, it's a gathering space, it's a different space, so. And then looking at Hamlet Avenue, let me kind of go back over to the map real quick. So just to remind ourselves what that street section looks like. So really, just this one block of Hamlet is what's part of our study area. You know, very similar angled spaces that are, don't really meet current standards in terms of their angle. They stick out into the roads. You've got cars, you know, as they, come on. As they pull in, you see that truck's kind of hanging out there already. These cars are hanging out. So, and then we've got some ADA issues along here, too. Not necessarily as severe as the historic section of Main Street, but there are definitely some challenges. So how can we, you know, so we looked at, how can we improve this space? Yeah, I mean, you can see this truck's hanging over, that car's hanging over. Not really the ideal street section. So going back to the report, what we're looking at here is angled spaces on the one side. This is where there's currently more business activity. Of course, we want to, you know, I think there's obviously a desire to probably grow the activity on the other side of the street, but this allows us to have angled on one side, parallel on the other, maintaining the existing center line of the street, gives us a nice, comfortable 11-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. Over here, again, we've got seven-foot sidewalk with a five-foot gathering space. This really allows us to follow the grade and match the doors in the storefronts, and then, you know, just enough area to kind of slope back down to the street. So again, we're able to help solve some of the ADA issues while still creating a, you know, a place that's comfortable to walk, a place that, you know, you can sit and wait while your husband or your wife's in the store, and you want to sit outside and kind of wait. You know, I know when my wife goes to the Christmas store, I'm always out on the bench outside, so. But yeah, that's kind of the idea, is to make a little bit more of an inviting pedestrian space. And then we've also looked at, again, these kind of bumpouts at the intersections. Again, slowing traffic down signifies you're coming into a little bit more of a special space, makes the pedestrian crossing a lot safer. You know, that's a much shorter distance rather than going all the way across, so. And then, what's not really reflected in the plans as much, but we know that there's, these traffic lights here at the street, at Raleigh Street, are on the wires with the poles that hang across. We, you know, we've started to think about, you know, what if those were the big, large mast arms? You can kind of get rid of some of the wires that, just more as an aesthetic. That's definitely an optional, a nice-to-have, but not required. So that, in a nutshell, is our plan. Here's, again, just a section. This is, again, this is Hamlet, you know, the angled on one side. That car's not parked in the tree. The tree is just behind the car, and the space is back. But again, it gives you a nice, comfortable walking zone. And then this is, you know, kind of far up north along Main Street. So again, the angled on both sides, the travel lanes, sidewalks. And again, with the businesses built further back, it's less of an ADA issue, so. So that's the plan in a nutshell. Before I talk about what everybody wants to know, what's this going to cost me, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
That's what I was going to ask, how much does this cost?
Have you done this, had a situation similar to this that you've got in the historic district, where you have to raise the sidewalk area? Have you done anything like this before?
Yeah, we've actually got a project currently now in Four Oaks that is actually, I think, construction started, I think it's already under construction in Four Oaks. We're looking at a block or two within Main Street. We're doing some of the similar work in Wendell, which is eastern Wake County.
Right.
So we've got, so yeah, so we're working on this now. This is definitely a common challenge in some of the older towns, but we see it a lot, so. Definitely something we're seeing more and more.
Okay. Well, one of our concerns, I believe, with the parallel parking is it would be a lot fewer parking spaces, and I'm not sure how we would get around that.
Yeah, that's always a tough one. That's something that's hard to resolve. It's, I always, you know, I always go back to the idea, it's sort of a trade-off. You know, you're never going to get, you're not going to make everybody happy. You're not going to be able to get everything you want, which is unfortunate. But I think in terms of fixing the ADA issues, this is one of the few options that are available. We did look at some other options that maintained angled parking, but you ended up with three or four, three or four-foot wide sidewalks, and we didn't feel that was really viable. You know, four foot's pretty much the bare minimum for ADA, and that's just, that's a really uncomfortable space. Imagine walking down a four-foot sidewalk, and, you know, you've got to go single file, and you're still bumping shoulders as you're passing someone going the other way. A five-foot sidewalk is pretty typical in most neighborhoods and subdivisions and other places, so we didn't really feel comfortable with anything smaller than six or eight. You know, probably anything smaller than eight, being downtown. Again, we want people to come here and be comfortable. There is plenty of parking further north. I know people don't like to walk the extra block or two. That's always a challenge we have to, we have to kind of fight. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have a great answer for that. Again, it's sort of that trade-off, you know. If we go angled, then we're, you know, we have other issues to fight then, so, or other issues to solve. It's a challenge.
Any other questions other than the cost?
What kind of trees was you thinking about putting in this area? Because we've had a lot of problems with roots messing up sidewalks and things like that.
Certainly, certainly. So we were, I mean, you know, these are shown as shade canopy trees. You know, we've seen certain oaks that do really well in urban conditions. There are some elms that do really well, that will grow really well, really well in tight spaces. Definitely want to stay away from maples and others such that have shallow root zones and pop-up. There's also things you can do. And again, I want to caution that this is not a buildable plan. This is a vision. This is a master plan. This is, provides direction for when you, when you do make the call to go into construction drawings and detailed design, that's when a lot of those decisions will be made. But other things we've done in the past, there's a product called Silva Cell. It's, think of a milk crate, and there's a series of them, and they're all underneath the sidewalk, and they're structural, so they can support the concrete of the sidewalk, or the pavers, or whatever that may be. And those are all filled with planting soil. So that way, those roots have the opportunity to spread within that undisturbed planting soil, and they're happy there. You know, they're not wanting to pop up into the sidewalks. But like everything else, there's a trade-off. There's a cost. So that is not factored into our current cost estimate, but we could always look and see what that might look like. But it's a great product, but again, you know, it has a cost to it, so.
All this is pretty much going to be low maintenance?
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent. That's what we always aim for. You know, again, you know, the sidewalk being your standard concrete material for sidewalks, the pavers here would be something like a concrete unit paver. You know, there's a couple ways you could do those. You could put them on a sand bed. That does tend to require a little more maintenance. You hear weeds that pop up, maybe sometimes the ground shifts. You can also install them on top of a concrete pad and mortar them in, so they don't move, and they have less of an issue. So again, the idea is to be low maintenance. The trees, you know, require some maintenance, especially early on. You want to make sure that they're limbed up appropriately, so they're, you don't have branches hitting, you know, folks in the face as they walk down. We don't want that, but. Yeah, I mean, the intent is it's fairly low maintenance. You know, no high-end materials, site furnishings that are going to withstand the elements. I would recommend, you know, something in kind of the mid-range line, you know, a nice metal frame, sustainable wood top or recycled plastic, kind of seating in back surfaces. Something simple, or you can even go with an all-aluminum bench type, but, you know, trying to stay away from the typical baseball field park bench, you know, where it's kind of eh, you know, something a little bit nicer, but not, you know, super expensive. Something in the $1,200 to $1,500 range each.
Yeah, I saw there on the benches, I saw where the price range could be anywhere from $200
Yeah, exactly.
$400 to $2,000.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, you know, if you think of your typical park with the recycled plastic seats in the backs with just the simple metal arms, you know, they're functional, they work.
Be heavy.
But, you know, those are a couple hundred dollars, four or $500. But there are some site furnishing companies where, you know, we work with that will have $2,000, $2,500 benches. So definitely not recommending those. Those typically involve exotic hardwoods, you know, powder-coated, you know, aluminum finish, maybe some etching, and some, definitely don't recommend. I mean, if you want to go that route, that's great, but we all know that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees, unfortunately.
And the weather will take a whole lot of it, just on the maintenance.
Just to remind you, we've just gotten new benches on our street, too.
Yeah, and those would be happy, I mean, those would be fine to stay, you know. You know, once you do make the decision to kind of put this forward in implementation, we would definitely look at what can remain, what can be replaced, and a lot of massaging can go in. And then, yeah, if you've got a bench that's new, benches that are new, wanting to stay that way, absolutely.
Any other questions?
In your experience with this, have you found any primary funding sources available other than taxpayer dollars?
That's a great question. So I apologize, I'm going to pull it up on my phone. I'm not 100% well-versed in the funding, but we have a funding and asset management group. This is all they do is funding. And my colleague put together a lengthy email that I will not read you word for word, but I will try to give you some of the highlights. Yeah, there are some programs that fund streetscape projects. There aren't a ton, but there are some. There's some, there's a community facilities direct loan and grant program through the USDA with low-interest loans and some grants. There's the Rural Business Development Grant through the USDA. Raise Grants through the Department of Transportation. There's the Safe Streets and Roads for All, which is through the Federal Highway Administration. There's the ATIP, which is the Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program through the U.S. Department of Transportation. There's the Urban and Community Forest Program, which expands access to trees and green spaces. May not be as applicable to this one. The North Carolina Main Street Program. There, and there's a couple other DOT-type programs. So, yeah, there's a series of grants out there. We, or if you were, you know, we would be happy to, you know, if this were to move forward, to develop a grant funding program approach to help seek out those grants and apply for those grants. A lot of things go into it. How competitive is it? There's almost always some sort of local match. We have some grants that are 50-50. We have other grants that are, you know, 80% grant, 20% local match. So I think in any case, you know, you're going to be looking at some sort of local funds through the CIP, you know, over the long term, but, you know, we'd have to develop, you know, kind of dive a little bit deeper into what that grant, what that grant strategy looks like.
And we could do this incrementally?
Yeah, I think so. You know, you could focus on, you know, a block at a time. I don't think I would take the first block and split it by the alley, but I would do this whole block. Or, yeah, I think kind of going block by block is a way you could do it. The further north you start, the easier it's going to be. Obviously, you know, Obviously, you know, I think that first, kind of that southern, eastern block of, the more historic is going to be your most costly, your most challenging. But yeah, you could definitely start it further north and work your way down and phase it for sure.
Well, you'll share that email with John, won't you?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Did the city contact you about bringing this presentation to Hamlet, or did you contact the city?
So we were, we're working with, working with Mackenzie and she had asked us that we come, you know, that we've been working for the last six or eight, nine months, maybe, I think.
At least.
So, so the city of Hamlet contacted you to come do the downtown and Hamlet area?
Yeah, so I wasn't involved in how we got, I wasn't part of how we got involved in the project, but it was, I believe it was through an RFQ process. We were selected as the firm to do the plan and then we spent the last six, nine months working on it. And then, yeah, Mackenzie asked me to come down and present our, our final findings to y'all tonight.
Just, just for situational awareness, Mackenzie did head up the, the project and working with, with us. But it came from the previous city manager's direction to, to have her go ahead and, and start that project.
We've had several community meetings here at City Hall, so it's, it's not like it's new out of the block.
Yeah, we were just kind of quiet for a little bit in the early fall while we had the staff transition, but.
It actually started, I think, in 2023, honestly. We had community meetings and a public was invited and then y'all got involved, so, yeah. It's been a, a process. Anything else?
Well, this is just a presentation, then we're not here to vote.
That's correct. It's just for information. We can take time, digest it in its entirety, have more conversations about it and then come up with a, a good. As John said, we need to look at capital outlay, capital improvement, see if it does fit in the budget.
And we're happy to have those further conversations to help you kind of work through some of that, you know, give you some ideas of cost and all that, so. Speaking of cost, oh, too far. So I will tell you, this is a placeholder. I had, we had a third party cost estimator provide a cost estimate for us. We did meet last week to go through some edits. I have not received those edits yet, but I don't think it's going to move the needle a whole lot. I won't go through this line by line. There's really no need to. But the big thing to know, we're probably in the four to four and a half million dollar range for the entirety of the plan. So, yeah, and this includes escalation through next, through later this year, I believe, if not even longer, so. So, but yeah, so we're, we're thinking, again, this is an opinion of cost. We make no guarantees. This is the best we can do based on a, on a visioning plan, but we're, we're thinking in the four and a half million dollar range total.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the fine presentation.
Absolutely. You have a great night.
You too. All right. Item number nine is Black History Month Proclamation. Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to share the many historical and, and present contributions of African Americans to the city of Hamlet. And whereas African Americans have played significant roles in the leadership of Hamlet's economic, cultural, spiritual, social, educational, and political development. And whereas the city of Hamlet celebrates Black History Month, recognizing the impact made by our African American community. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the rich history of a people who helped to build this country through neighborhood leadership and involvement. Advance the cause of civil rights and strengthen families and communities. And whereas during Black History Month, all residents are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of African Americans and look to the future, building upon this heritage. And to continue working for the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore do I, Amy Gwynn, Mayor of the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Hamlet to be affixed this 11th day of February 2025. Item number 10, July 4th celebration. Michelle? Our annual discussion.
Annual discussion. Our firework vendor has reached out so that we confirm the date for fireworks this year. July the 4th is on a Friday and we still can't reserve that date. But he has assured me that as soon as they get a crew that is certified, we are at the top of the list for the July 4th date. But he recommended July 3rd, which is on the Thursday before the Friday 4th, or the 5th, which is on a Saturday. So I'm coming to ask, which date would you like to have the fireworks on?
Is Ellerby doing the 4th?
They have the 4th.
Okay, because they do their own.
They do their own.
They don't have to get a company.
Well, I would say if, if, if we can't have it on the 4th, then what day was that, the 3rd?
July the 3rd on the Thursday.
Well, that'd be, I would be in favor of the 3rd as opposed to the 5th, because at least we could sort of advertise it as a 4th of July kickoff weekend.
Yeah.
And starting in Hamlet, that might be a good selling point. So I'd, I'd be in favor of the 3rd.
I second that. I agree with, I haven't made a motion yet, but.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Well, do we need a motion or something?
Sure.
Then I'll make a motion that our 4th of July celebration fireworks show will be on July the 3rd.
2025.
Do I have a second?
2025.
Second.
I second it, 30.
All in favor? All right, that was pretty easy.
Thank you. I will let them know and I will start advertising. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 11, Memorial Park Update. Mr. Chip Gordon.
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Got too many pockets like me, Chip.
Where'd the warm weather go? Sure don't seem like baseball season's getting close. So I'm here to talk about Memorial Park and kind of where we're at and where we're going. I spoke with Seth Evans about the lights earlier or towards the end of last week. And he assured me that unless something crazy happens, the, the new lights in Memorial Park will be up, installed and shining bright by the 10th, by March 10th. So he said they plan on starting work within the last week of February, taking the old poles down, getting the hardware down. All the lights are stocked, ready to go. They're waiting on the, the poles to be finished, the construction of the poles, everything else. And then they're going to load it on a truck and head our way. But I don't know if Eddie has mentioned or not, but the North Carolina American Legion Baseball Association asked us to, to host the Centennial Hall of Fame Classic this year. So we are going to host the 100 year Hall of Fame Class Tournament, or I guess they'd call it a tournament this year. May the 30th, I think that's Memorial Day weekend. Yeah, May 30th. We'll start that Friday night. We'll, we'll have the opening game against Garner. Hal Stewart, I don't know if a lot of y'all know Hal Stewart, but he played for Hamlet and he is the, or has been the athletic director for Garner for several years. And George Whitfield will be coming back that night. There will be honorary coaches to coach against each other. And they'll go out and give out lineups and meet with umpires and kind of, kind of put a big to do on it. We have Moore County coming to play, Garner's coming to play, Eastern Randolph, Chatham County, and Anson County right now has said they wanted to come play in it. So we got them penciled in. It'll be the whole weekend. Will be one game Friday night, four games starting at 10 o'clock in the morning on Saturday. And then I think it's four games also on Sunday as well. So we got a weekend full of baseball at Memorial Park. But to kind of, I guess, continue improving the park to where we need it to be at for, you know, tournament standards. Because we're planning to submit a bid for the 20, this is 2025, 2026 state tournament. There's just a few more things that we have to address and that is essentially building bullpens that are of quality standards. So, you know, we have a pretty adequate bullpen on the home side. The visitor side is, if I, it's.
Not very welcoming.
Yeah, it's not very well built. We, we threw it together in a, in a haste so they would have something. And it's kind of, time has took its toll on it. So we've, I kind of put together kind of some things that we need to make the, the bullpens. To build the bullpens would also put some safety measures in there so that because of where the bullpens are located, because we don't have the foul territory on the field to build them. To keep the, the fans safe, because they're, you know, if, if you've been to a game, they sit right up to the back of the pitchers, you know? And all it would take was a catcher to throw one bad throwback and we got people getting hit in the head with a baseball. So kind, to kind of build a wall there to, to keep the people from getting into the bullpen and for the players, if an errant throw goes back and it doesn't get in the crowd. Kind of put all that in there. And then added the, the dirt and stuff to build the new bullpens. We would reuse a lot of the dirt that's there, but to put the, you know, to build the bullpens adequately and then also have dirt to maintain the, the home plate area and the pitchers mound throughout the season. And through Site One out of Moore County, who is the closest distributor of that type of products, we're looking at 2,200 bucks. And that's including the, the delivery and their tax in that, there's their, their quote from their sales manager. The lumber that would be needed to build the, the partition walls behind each bullpen so that fan safety would be there. Really only needing it on the home side because of where the visitor side is at. No, no fans are down that far. And we could kind of take the piecemeal system that we have there now and move it to the, to visitor side to keep errant throws from the pitcher that get past the catcher from getting down onto the field and having to stop play. And, you know, these are just, these are, I went on Lowe's and just looked up what the cost of their materials are. And, you know, we can, we can kind of scale some of that stuff back. But, you know, I was, I was planning the most ideal design possible. So we're looking at about 630 for the lumber and going in and, you know, anchoring rebar stakes. It's obviously going to be cheaper to buy long sections of rebar and then cut it. But, you know, we, I was just, you know, we would need about two foot section. So a two foot section, then you would need about 25 of them to secure the whole.
Who would be constructing this?
Me and the other baseball coaches. And you would be getting it at a whopping zero dollar cost.
Some more volunteer labor.
You know, we perform by me and my assistant coaches. And, you know, probably my dad would probably come out there and.
Do you know what you're doing?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I've, I've built a lot of stuff. If you, if you've seen Memorial Park, you, over the past four years, you, you'll, you can attest that I have a pretty good idea on baseball field work. From where we took it to where it is now. But you're, you know, you're looking at a all in cost of the, the materials to, after that, there's nothing with the, with the lighting upgrade and the netting that we've added. And the, the batting cages that, you know, we've, the city's been fortunate to help us get Memorial Park ready. This is the final piece of the puzzle that will get us to where we can, we can host tournaments year after year after year. And that's essentially is our goal, is to, to bid on the state tournament. That's every year that we're eligible to bid on it. And then the years that we're not able to bid on it, you know, have a facility that we can put these type of tournaments on for here, years to come. At the state tournament this past year, I really got, got to know the, the state director and people want to come to Hamlet and play now. Because they, they see that we pack Memorial Park out and that everybody's right on you. And, you know, we put 200 people in there, it feels like you get 800 people in there. And they like that. They like the, the building out there. They, they think it's a great place to come and play. And, you know, when we, when we put these things on, we want to have the best possible facility that people can come to. I mean, where we played the state tournament at last year, outside of them having a real pretty wall that a business donated, you know, a padded wall, our facility was better than theirs. And I will, I will put money down that nine out of every 10 places we play, we have a better facility than they do, unless we get, unless we have to go play at a college stadium. You know, you're not, we're not going to compete with a university. But everybody wants to come to Hamlet and play because of the facility that we have. And that's a, a testament to y'all being behind us. And, you know, this is the final piece of the puzzle to, to get that there. Outside of our bullpens, you know, I say we got a first class stadium.
What about the netting, Chip, on the side for the, where the foul balls come in the netting? Did I miss that?
Uh, no, I think. I think what we got, well, the netting we added last year was from, if you're, you know, it's on the home team side from the backstop over to the dugout. And with the grant for the lights that we got this year, there's, there should, there's, there's, I think we got 210,000, 200 and something, 210, 212,000. And with the lighting, there was some left over that for facility improvements that we were going to budget in for, for netting to carry down from where we carried it last year. Down to, down the first base side to one of those light poles to save people from getting hit by line drives going into the, the crowd right there. Because there were a lot of close calls last year.
Yeah, I like to sit on that, on the bank and watch it, it's a good play.
We were going to add that netting down that side out of that, that grant money, so it will be no cost to the city. And I think that would pretty much, with the lighting and the nets, pretty much take it out. We're also factored in there a, a sound system, so we would have an, an outdoor sound system that we wouldn't have to take up and take down every night. And that would make everything a lot easier. And the, the baseball program has decided to, once that is up, the, the sound system that the Legion team had purchased, we were going to donate that back to the city. And let the city use it for their purposes, whatever they want to do for, you know, a small thank you for what y'all have done for us. And, you know, that's pretty much what we need right there to make it, in my opinion, the best place to come play in North Carolina.
Most of the time where you have, have the best facilities and the better athletes out there.
Yes, sir, we did, we had a pretty good, pretty good run last year.
But what about, what about the parking, the parking area, does, and beyond? When you start filling it up?
Yeah, it's, ideally, it would be great if we could, we could get Duke to come in there and put some lights in there.
In the parking lot, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just in, in not.
The safety reasons.
For safety purposes. You know, I, I think that most people would feel more safer if there were lights in there. I know even my wife has complained about Food Line's lights being, the parking lot being too dark for a long time and they finally got that fixed. I mean, it, I think just the, the darkness is what is the, is, was the issue. But, you know, that's, I understand that that's. that's not City Hamlet property, that's Richmond County Schools property. But the lighting company has, because, you know, we work, they work so well with us, and we got along with them, they have found some, I think, six to eight extra high-intensity lights that they're gonna place. They're gonna put one on the back of the press box that shines out towards the parking lot. And then they're gonna put one kinda over there on the breezeway area that shines down towards the bathroom to help light that area up. So they're throwing some extra lights in there to kinda light up some of the darker spots to to try to alleviate some of that darkness in those common areas.
Feel safer.
Yeah, but, you know,
Do you think Duke would be willing to help?
Ma'am?
Do you think Duke would be willing to help? Are they good community partners?
I know Raimy Mudd at Duke, but I don't really know anybody at Duke Power. I know they send me a power bill every month for the farm.
They know you whether you know them or not.
But, no, I don't really know anybody at Duke, but I don't see why Duke wouldn't.
One pole at the back corner would be a tremendous help.
You know, and, you know, I think that it might be something that we could maybe go to a, I don't know, a school board meeting and say, hey, is there any way that, you know, y'all could help us get with, you know, because parent-teacher conferences, I'm sure parents park over there at Monroe Avenue to go, you know, I think it would just, you know, one pole wouldn't be a big ask for Duke to come in and set up to light that parking lot up.
I think that's a good idea, Chip.
But, you know,
I'm planning to bring a lot of this up that we're talking about in budget sessions. All this will be discussed down the road.
Yeah, we don't need to discuss it now.
Well, it's mute because it's gonna have to come up in budget sessions.
Oh, sure.
And so, but anyway, we have some plans, you know, that we're gonna have to ask the city to do and some costs and stuff. But all this will come up in budget meetings that we've planned to have in the near future.
And then the only other thing that I wanted to bring was the, for the past several years, Hodges Landscaping has been helping us fertilize and do weed control on the field and stuff of that nature. And I have his quote or his bid for the continued service of that this year. And it went up by $800 this year, and he said that that was the dirt one.
That was what?
That was the one for the dirt for the Site One, the company out of Moore County. That was their actual quote that I've just put into that first slide.
Oh, okay.
But it went up by $800 this year, and he, and he said we could take that back out. I think he said it went up. It was around 800 bucks, he said it went up. But he said we could take that back out if we wanted to. But he, he added an extra 200 feet behind the playing surface to try to help build the turf back up in the soccer and the football playing areas. Because, as you all know, by the end of soccer and football season, that area is trampled down. There's not a lot of grass left to play on. But this would be the fertilizing five times a year, spraying insecticides and pesticides, working on irrigation systems. You should something, you know, should we have a head break, we can call him, he can come and fix the heads. Coming back, coming every year like he does it, and polyracking the infield, knocking down humps.
Down rather than lump sum, I mean, irrigation heads, fertilizing, pre-emergent fertilizer rather than just a-
Can, he can do that, I can't. I don't, I don't really know.
I think that'd probably be easier for us to look at.
But, yeah, I mean, it's essentially the exact same thing he's been doing every year, but if you want me to get a breakdown quote, I can do that. I can get one from him. I don't know how he sent it over for last year, but this is basically basically doing all the fertilizing of all the of all the grass, football field, soccer field, baseball field, weed-killing, insecticides, all that stuff for all of Memorial Park's, the grass surface out there.
Chip, when doing all that fertilizing stuff, do you think maybe if the Department of Public Works and could assist with our public parks director and doing some of that fertilizing and doing some of that, putting, distributing that stuff out? Would that be a possibility?
I, I mean,
That's, we're talking mostly labor.
Yeah, I mean, most of it's labor. I mean, if, I mean,
We've got,
if we have the ability to buy the fertilizer and the chemicals and all of that stuff, it's nothing to put out. We do it every day on the farm.
Just knowing when to put it out, and pre-emergents and insecticides and things like that.
The, I mean, the fertilizing and the spraying and all that stuff is, you know, is not a, is not a hard thing to do. It's just the understanding of when to do it and, you know, I don't know when to put fertilizer on a hayfield in a pasture. But, you know, when certain types of turf grass need it, I don't, I'm not, I'm not that guy.
But it's, you know, I'm trying to say instead of hiring out a third party, could we have it done in-house?
I mean, if you have a person here that is, that understands turf management, then I would say yes. But I don't-
I've got anybody certified for that.
It's just strictly questioned, you know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, because some of these chemicals, you have to have a, I'm sure you have to have a license to buy.
That's right.
And, you know, I don't have them.
And I don't know if the city even has them.
So I would say that, you know, to have it done in a a professional manner and to keep the the progress that we've made moving forward on the field, without Mitchell, you know, that field wouldn't be as where it is today either.
And probably a big advantage is if we could get the soccer and the football team to play. We've got great facilities around, other than Memorial Park. Move them to one of those facilities may work.
That's, that's a city issue.
Well, what I wanted to say is, in my previous position, I had a landscape planner that actually worked for me. So, you know, the council has to understand that comes at a very large cost to have somebody that's certified and knows what they're doing when it comes to building up turf, when it comes to managing soccer fields, baseball fields, football fields. So we can look at ways to save funds on this through the budget. But if we're talking about having somebody to actually do this within our employees, they would need to be certified and know how to do that. And again, it would come at a fairly large cost to have a certified landscape planner.
Yeah, and it comes up, the city has a whole culture, so I don't know how much it is.
But, you know, I know that, I know that Mitchell does a tremendous job, and if I ever have an issue with a head or anything like that, and it's something that, you know, you know, Doc can't get to you right at that time or something like that, he goes out of his way to kinda come and make sure that we're not down for too long. And, you know, he does good work, and, you know, I-
Does, he does excellent work, Doc.
Yeah, Chip and council, and in the sake of saving time, I think, you know, this is information for the council to think of as we're moving towards through our budget season. And while I have these numbers, I can also do some homework and then bring it back to the council during the budget retreats, and we can move forward from there and get some of these questions answered. And if you guys have requests for information, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to me as you dig more into these costs, and I can work with Chip and have him work with the person that gave the bid to get a better idea of what's being spent where.
How soon did you need the $3,000? Let me ask that.
The sooner the better so that we could go ahead and get them built and get them going, get them up and ready. Ideally, we'd like to have them ready by, when we host our tryouts for our junior and our senior team.
What are you saying?
Well, I'm saying this $3,000, it's not gonna stay that $3,000. You think you can stay within that budget, or do you need to bump it up some?
The $3,000? Oh, we can be done well. I mean, I put some buffer in there. So we didn't go, if we did go over, you know, we would have a little bit of-
Well, that's where I'm coming from, is that gonna be-
That three grand would be plenty to do that, yes.
If you, if someone wants to entertain a motion for the three grand, I would say that, you know, we're in the middle of a budget season. So just do a motion pending budget, pending budget adjustment with finance versus just saying, because we gotta look at where the funds are and where we can allocate them from, and then we bring a budget adjustment to the board to approve.
You're looking for a motion now?
If you, just pending final budget adjustment, which would be during the next session.
And just to kinda round that out, I think what the manager's looking for is, does council want to pay for the requested cost? And then probably next month, maybe in April, he can come back with a budget appropriation or a budget amendment at that time, but that way, you know, Chip knows what he, he's got what he needs if that's how council wants to proceed.
Take that, okay.
I make a motion that we approve this request, and you can go to work.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Just a point of clarification, that's just on the $3,000.
Right, just on the amendment to the field for the purposes of the bullpens.
And if you want me to get broke down one of those, I will call Mitchell tomorrow and have him break down that quote so you know ideally where everything goes.
And it's $3,000 total.
Little Hunter, I just rounded it off.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you and your staff and your coaches for the great job that you do for us.
Well, we appreciate it, and we thank y'all for everything y'all do for us. Without y'all's support, this program would-
For our American Legion.
Be done, gone to funk by now.
Thank you.
Before you step down,
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the lighting system, of course.
Yes, sir.
And I talked to Jimmy Herring, the owner of Carolina Sun Sound.
Yes, sir.
He assured me that the city would be getting state-of-the-art equipment, that it's gonna be very, very nice. Secondly, you mentioned the Hall of Fame game.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I actually have a, the schedule for that on there, if he, you know, if he would like to, you know, save it and, you know, email it or whatever, we can go ahead and you can start, we can start promoting that or however you want to do it.
But what I really wanted to mention was, that's the Hall of Fame game on the 30th or whenever it is.
Yes, sir.
We also gonna have a grand opening or opening season home game, opening on May 23rd.
Yes, sir, the Friday before that. We'll actually play Friday, the 23rd at home, we'll play on the road. I think it's Wednesday, and then we'll be back home Friday night.
Thursday, Friday, the 23rd.
Yes, sir.
We'll have an opening game for the opening season of the American Legion Post 49 baseball.
Yes, sir.
We always have an opening ceremony. And that will also be done on the 23rd.
Yes, sir.
And we'll have all our mayors and county commissioners, or chairmen and boards, and other officials and dignitaries and this and that. And also, I want to make, mention that we always try to recognize some, a group like the Veterans Fest. American Legion baseball team that won the last state championship and different things like that. This year, we would like to honor the firefighters this year.
Plan would be great.
Have the firefighters from all the municipalities, Rockingham, Hamlet, Elleby, all around that has a fire department. We want them down there, but I'll talk to you more about that later.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, I just wanted to mention that before you step down, that we are gonna have an opening home season, and we'll be playing Anson County.
Yes, sir, we'll be playing Anson County on the 23rd.
I tell you.
It'll be 7:00 game.
The game will be at 7, but we'll have the ceremony at 6:30. So we need all the people there that's gonna be involved in the ceremony by 6:30. And then the game will be at 7, as close to 7 as we can get it. But, and we'll do what we always do. We'll have some food for the guests and this and that. But I just wanted to mention that because, you know, nothing was said about the 23rd, it's only the 28th or something. So we will have a grand opening, it's not really a grand opening, but a home opening ceremony to officially open the season of 2025 American Legion baseball on the 23rd. So I want everybody to mark that date down, Friday, May 23rd, 6:30 PM. Opening game, be playing Anson County, Richmond, I mean, Post 49, Hamlet, Post 49 will be playing Anson County to open the season.
One question I had, and several people asked me about this last year, are season tickets available?
They will be, they're not available right now, but they will be.
Be available.
Yes, ma'am, they will be.
Good.
And where can they be bought?
I am going to contact a couple of local businesses around here, hopefully, Maybe's Drug will sell some for us, Maybe City Hall, and, you know, try to do it that way.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Message me or call me if they should want them.
I wonder what the chances will be to get Franklin Stubbs to come up here on open day or Hall of Fame day.
I don't know about that.
See that.
But, yeah, that's kinda where we are, and looking forward to another great season. We got a great team building up, and I think we're gonna, gonna keep turning heads.
Good. All right, thank you, Chip.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Chip.
Item number 12, interlocal agreement between Richmond County and Hamlet.
Counsel, mayor, mayor pro temp, so we currently have an interlocal agreement that we're working on with Richmond County and the city of Hamlet. It's to provide both water and sewer services. There's 22 properties that we are providing water and sewer services to, but they actually lie in the county. So this interlocal agreement, what it does is it gives us 95% of the fees from that, and it gives the county 5% of the fees for that. The reason we would be paying the county 5% is because they're actually ones going out and doing the meter readings and doing the billing, and then actually pushing those funds back over to the city. With that being said, this has already been reviewed by the city attorney, myself, and from my understanding of the county manager, but I'll be meeting with the county manager in the next week. And we would like to finalize this document, so pending any large changes, we're looking for a motion to approve this interlocal agreement as it stands.
I make a motion, we accept the agreement as it stands.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Item number 13, our monthly meeting schedule amendments and adoption of budget calendar.
So, as I came in and was hired to be the city manager, one of the first things I did was look at our calendar for the upcoming budget season, and then I was looking for ways to to decrease time, create efficiency, and overall save money for the town and the taxpayers. With that being said, I created a budget calendar. This is not a budget calendar that hasn't been used before. It's been used in multiple cities, and, you know, I'm very thankful for my mentors that have brought me to where I am today, so I was able to bring their budget calendars over to Hamlet as well and tie that to our meeting schedule. And again, I would like to amend it for several reasons, and my top three reasons is this one, this schedule will support my proposed budget calendar. The updated schedule reduces the number of meetings and saves time, money, and is more efficient, therefore saving tax dollars. And then the third reason, it gives the board the opportunity to spend an entire day reviewing all departmental capital outlay budget requests for the upcoming FYI. And it also puts together a five-year capital improvement plan, which the town, the city has not seen for some- And it also puts together a a five year capital improvement plan, which the town, the city has not seen, uh, for some time. And I in doing so, I I believe that we're gonna be able to be more proactive, uh, with a well thought out plan to improve and replace some of our critical infrastructure that's in dire need of of being replaced. And also plan for those large purchase items, uh, that that have been coming at more of a reactionary cost lately. Um, and for example, like I wouldn't want to put, you know, a a fire truck purchase on the same year as we're doing a, uh, a trash, uh, truck purchase. That's too large cost when we also have infrastructure that we got to replace. So this way I'll be able to work with all the department heads and cross organize their five year plans. Uh, and and then have them pitch that five year plan to you and a capital improvement and capital outlay plan, uh, during a budget retreat for approval. Again, this is just to get to, uh, the C I P during the budget retreat. And then we would move further into a budget workshop to look at large scale budget and and find to the fine tune the the line items. Um, I did speak with a few council members about this. And what I did find out is seven March, which is proposed on the budget, would not work. Um, and it's a conflict, but after discussion with a couple of board members, um, uh, they proposed the date of the fourth of March, starting at noon until complete. Uh, additionally highlighted the dates of July and December meetings. Um, uh, and again, this is just a recommendation, looking for the board's thoughts on it. But I'd recommend that July, uh, and or December, board to to not hold a regular meeting. And the justification for that is it gives the staff the time to focus on administrative work, our training needs and time to focus on getting caught caught up after the budget adoption during the holidays. Pending any questions?
I do. When you have these questions about wanting to contact the board members or stuff and that's on the text messages, could you send us one through the text messages or email us?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's where and that way we keep up on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I just got the final date, uh, from the fourth, like just as the meeting was starting. I had a council member, Stuart, looking at it through his calendar because he wasn't gonna be able to be here. Um, so so, yeah, it was, uh, I'll ensure that you guys get information faster next time.
Yeah, that information, Ms. Hawks does a great job on keeping it updated on that.
So you're saying the budget workshop itself, the long term workshop would be on the fourth, beginning at noon time, right?
Um.
Instead of the seventh.
The budget, uh, retreat.
Retreat, I'm sorry, I apologize.
The fourth of March, beginning at noon until complete. Uh, I think we have six different capital plans that we need to go through. Cutting those down to about forty five minutes to an hour max, we're looking at about a a a six hour timeframe that we would be going through. That would be open to the public, uh, as well. Um, and that again, gives the the department heads the time to go through their projected project list for the upcoming F Y and then the next four years following that.
Okay, all right.
And then once we get to April eighth and we merge the, uh, general light items with the capital outlay, with myself and, uh, the finance director working closely together. We would get a working draft to you guys, uh, for April and then have a budget workshop where we go through those individual line items and and go more in depth. If you guys have any questions on it, that would be the time to present them or bring up any concerns. But myself and the finance director are hoping that we bring a budget to you that you're comfortable with and that you you, uh, don't have any questions with.
Um, what time would that start? That's our regular work.
That's regular meeting.
Okay, regular meeting, I got it.
And then as you see on the schedule too, there's 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 a lot of dates on here. But those dates are really for the finance director, myself and the department heads as we're working through the budget. And then we're giving updated schedules or updated, uh, budget drafts to the council before meetings. Um, and then finally, the budget books would come to the council May twenty second with the intent to adopt the budget June tenth.
So what I need is a motion. Do we do these two separately or do we do them together?
I would do them two separately.
All right, let's start with the, um, just the regular meeting schedule. Do do we want to modify it to take out July and or December?
Both, isn't it, John? Did you say both or one or the other?
I said either or.
Either or, okay, I missed that.
I think that Joe, just one more justification too. I think when it comes to July and December, these are are large travel months for not only you as the council members, but the citizens of Hamlet. And also it becomes a a huge travel and vacation months for for the employees as well. So we gotta try to manage the expectations and, uh, my previous position, this served as a really good time to get caught up on all the administrative needs that we had.
Well, I would suggest December.
You can take both of them out. I mean, it's one, both, and you know, what do you want to do?
I was gonna make a motion that we accept the, uh, meeting schedule with the deletion of July the eighth.
Well, is that, uh, March the fourth thing in there somewhere?
We're gonna make another motion on March the fourth. We'll make another motion for the, uh, ca- uh, budget retreat on March the fourth.
Well, the reason I I mentioned that, there's also gonna be a funeral on March the fourth, starting at twelve o'clock at the Cole Auditorium that I sort of wanted to go to. I feel like I should.
If we were to push that time to the right by an hour, would that give you time to?
It's gonna be pretty large funeral. I don't know. I mean, it don't matter, I mean, I I can. I'll try to make some arrangements, but that is March the fourth, I mean, you know.
Yes, sir.
That's already been planned. I'm sure that's March the fourth, though. I mean, do you know anything what I'm talking about? Bill Futterer.
Nah, have they said a date? I don't know.
Owner of W A Y N radio station.
I'll tell you. All that's filled, that's some fun.
Well, let's, we need to get this right now. We've got a motion for the scheduled meeting. I'm sorry, mayor, that's your job.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, Tony's motion.
All right, all in favor? So that's to take off July eighth, but leave December ninth. All right, so on to the budget. Um, and that's the one with March fourth on it. To amend our budget, do I have budget calendar, do I have a motion? Someone.
If we push it up to one o'clock, at least that would give Eddie wouldn't miss much if he went to the funeral.
Wouldn't it be okay for if I come to the meeting later?
Yes.
I mean, I'll be here, but it might be a little later.
I don't.
Absolutely.
Soon as possible.
And and, uh, council member Martin, I I I believe that we'll be given presentation. So, uh, you you may arrive at a time where where they're just going through statistics versus talking about capital outlay, capital improvement.
We're gonna leave it at twelve o'clock, I make a second.
All right, all in favor?
I'll second, oh, you are second.
Got a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, city managers report.
Uh, first of all, I just wanted to thank the, uh, the council, uh, for their trust and confidence and putting me in the position that they have. It's truly an honor to serve the city of Hamlet. Uh, next thing, I just wanted to say that I've been around through most of the staff and directorates, uh, at this point. And I'm just truly impressed with their hard work, uh, and and the patience as we're going through some organizational change, right? You you come under a new city manager and and things change and they're not always. It's an organizational change is not always an easy growth process. But I'm just, uh, you know, really happy with the attitudes that I've that I've met and the the personalities and looking forward to working with these directorates. Um, getting on more of the the business, I did go to the North Carolina City County Management Manager Association Conference, five through seven, February. That was a great opportunity and investment is invaluable for that. The North Carolina League of Municipalities gave all the legal and legislative updates. Uh, and we worked through different types of funding opportunities. I believe they'll come in handy over over the years, uh, as the Hamlet city manager. I also attended the the new city county managers meet and greet, uh, and multiple other meetings, but there was just a ton of network opportunities. And it 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 was it was a little interesting because I didn't know anybody there, but I had so many city and county managers approach me and they already knew who I was and were just willing to to help. So that, uh, that time being, uh, away from the the desk, again, was invaluable. Um, just a update, uh, I do have North Carolina certified zoning official status still and so does my assistant city manager, um, McKenzie. There's a winter workshop that we need to attend to, uh, to maintain our credentialing. That's gonna be a day and a half event out of Cary and it will be this coming, the seventeenth and half of the eighteenth, uh, to maintain our credentials. So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that that everybody's on track with that. Um, and and I also wanted wanted to add that when it comes to these legislative and legal updates, that there's a lot of them coming. And we need to really understand what it means when we're talking about updating our unified development ordinance. And when there's also laws that are pushed that are called downsizing that myself and the 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 city attorney will be talking very closely, uh, about to so that I understand them completely. You get enough to to make you dangerous when you hear from the North Carolina League of Municipalities and some of the some of the, uh, legal updates up there. But then we gotta really like dig into them at down at the city level as well. Um, see the city manager or city attorney finds it funny because he knows and he's already gone through it with other cities. Uh, so the code of ordinance is I've I've heard a I've heard a lot of chatter about the code of ordinance. And what I'd like to do is distribute, uh, the code of ordinance out over the next six months to a year, going by one to three chapters at a at a time. Um, if this is something that the city would like to do so that we can read in it, ink it and update our code of ordinance. It hasn't it hasn't been updated in many years and I've I've heard, you know, sidebar conversations that is in dire need of being updated. Uh, and if that is something that the council would like to do, I would just ask for a motion that we begin the process of the code of ordinance to review and make updates. And again, that would be probably a a six to twelve month process going going through this and and making the updates.
You talking about the code of ordinance and compliances as such as this book?
That is.
Like amendments.
That is, that is correct.
That's correct. And all I saw some of that, some of this stuff in here is it's forty years old or or older. And it comes up in and it, uh, I get questions from our citizens and that's the reason I have this. I can give them what's this and it's outdated. Then I've got, you deal with some of the, uh, department heads and they say, no, that's not it. And you run into that kind of situation and it's kind of let's get it in black and white and heavy.
So would you like to make a a motion, Oscar?
Nah.
Would you like to make a motion that we update it?
I do.
And we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right.
Next thing, Hamlet zoning ordinance. Uh, so currently we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars allocated over two years, this current F Y and the upcoming F Y two, to develop our own unified development ordinance. The unified development ordinance going to a a U D O versus having a just a zoning ordinance, it's gonna combine our traditional zoning and subdivision regulations with other local reg- regulations. But this also, uh, includes the rules and the laws that that we our ordinance is we have as a city that talks about land and building development, building design, sign regulations, flood and storm water management. And it gives a it gives a very, um, uh, well rounded, single guide to work with developers and builders and engineers with when it comes to site plans and preliminary plots. It also updates our cor- current ordinance and, um, and and I believe that it's it's really gonna help getting our future development, economic development in Hamlet to the place that the the citizens want it to be. Um, saying that, it's just an update. I just wanted to tell you that that money was already earmarked and it just it has not went forward. But I did already task out my assistant city manager with, uh, talking to some consultants. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna look at cost and time evaluation. And if this is something that myself and and McKenzie can work on ourselves and and take a great ordinance from another city and work with with, uh, the city attorney. We may do that, but it's it's better to go ahead and use the funds, allocate it and have them do the work for us. Uh, if the city attorney wants.
If I may, I'm not gonna tell you how to manage Mr. City Manager, but, um, first of all, the U D O is a great idea. It, uh, does more than just take existing ordinances and put them all in a single book. It really becomes a way that if someone wants to invest in Hamlet, they're able to do it in a more, uh, more efficient fashion because there's just one place that they look. And there's a lot of other benefits. Um, I've I've had the unfortunate experience of seeing, uh, in house staff trying to do that process themselves and it can be done. But it always takes more time than anybody imagined and I think the product is usually not as good. And it's not for lack of skill from the in house staff, but it's just because they've got so many things they already have on their plate. And if you have an outside consultant that comes in and does that work and it may well take that much money, uh, to get that done, um, I I think you get a better product. So, yeah, I'll leave it to council and to, um, to the manager to make a decision about that, but I'd recommend an outside consultant if possible.
I concur with the city attorney.
You need them, huh? No.
So I also wanted to just give quick, uh, water treatment updates. You know, we have the the grants, we're working with L K C and also with Withers Ravnall. Um, but the design is close to finish for our water treatment. L K C submitted the permit to the public water supply on December seventeenth. It's still currently in review, but the structural and electrical designs are under review now with L K C. And we're expecting to push bids out sometime in late February, uh, and hoping to open those bids in March. Uh, also a reminder that this project's a hundred percent funded through through our ARPA, our American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, and those those funds actually expire on twelve thirty one of twenty six. Uh, so this has become a top priority for me to get get it across the finish line. That's a huge project valued at ten million dollars. We need, we need to get a a push on this. Uh, for the wastewater, it's a little behind schedule. Uh, the discharge permit expansions, uh, were signed by the mayor mayor and they were submitted by L K C for review and feedback. Um, but I need to get more information from L K C. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow to talk both about, um, the wastewater treatment and the water treatment projects that we have. Uh, Withers and Ravnall staff updated me, the Department of, uh, Water Infrastructure posted the staff recommendations for the fall round application of the asset inventory and assessment. That's that's A I A grants and those are designed to help local governments manage our water and wastewater system. This goes to the second part where L K C is managing the much larger portion of the push to expand our capacity from a million to two million. Um, but then there's some additional expansion that needs to happen. But then there's some additional expansion that needs to happen, engineering that needs to happen outside of that. And we should find out a formal decision on the 19th of getting two grants, both for $150,000 to work on water and wastewater. That's, again, that formal decision has not been made. But I will have an update for you at the next board meeting if we have another $300,000 to update our critical infrastructure. I've tasked our human resources out with looking at the 2024 market pay for the '25 and '26 fiscal year budget. This is preliminary, but what I want to do is analyze market pay adjustments versus COLA. And there'll be more following on that and talks through the budget. But just giving you all an update. I've also placed the extra emphasis, currently working with TC, the city attorney, and our code enforcement to stay on track with our order of abatement process. And we have buildings downtown that are crumbling. They're causing, they're causing damage to other buildings that are budding them. Many of these buildings are unsafe and a hazard to the population and businesses budding them. By removing those hazards, we'll open new opportunities for economic development and small business owners. And it's primary focus mine to revitalize our downtown and make it thrive again. We do have a beautiful downtown. And it just, it just needs a little help and support from the town. And I think that I have the network and hopefully the support from the board to move forward with some of these order of abatement processes. To add to what Chip had brought, just wanted to update the board that the baseball lights, the intercoms and the speakers, the lights are not here yet, but they're projected to be here in the next week or so. The intercoms are here. We're expecting the lights to arrive again next week. When they arrive, it's going to take five, six weeks to get those up. And then, once the lights are up, they'll be able to put the intercom systems up. So we're looking around two months to get everything done. And last note that I had, tried to get through this as fast as possible. So if you all have more questions later, don't hesitate to reach out to me. But the City Lake Trail, we still have $219,109 in ARPA funds. And I met with Department of Commerce today out of Raleigh. And we're working with Withers and Ravnall. I'm going to have a meeting with them this week to go over the design of that project so that we can start getting that project back on track as well and finish the trail around the city lake. Pending any question, that's the manager's report.
That was a lot. Thank you. So, Mr. Martin?
All my comments was going to pertain to the American Legion Post 49 baseball upcoming season. So I've already discussed about everything I need to do about that. So I don't have any further comments.
All right, Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to thank all the attendees for coming and staying through the town. And more especially, it was nice to see some of the department heads here. And I'd like to see that be a monthly thing for the department heads to come. And you can read it on paper, but it's better if they come and you can, maybe you have some questions you want to ask and be better communication. Thank y'all for being here on that deal. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Close?
I'd like to say welcome, John, to the city of Hamlet. I don't know if you read your contract real close or not, but you've got to stay here at least 30 years. But we are glad to have you and we're expecting great things. And it is good to see the department heads here. Good to see each one of you here. We thank you for coming. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor Potem?
Well, I want to echo the sentiments that, thank you, welcome, John. Glad to have you. Glad to have your family and friends here. I want to thank too Eddie. We heard a long presentation from Chip and he told what we've done and what we've got to do. But I think the real benefit of a presentation like that is he was able to carry it a step further and say, we're going to have this as a result of what you've done and what you've spent. You know, and a lot of times, we go out on a limb and we spend money and you don't really know if these things will materialize. And Eddie has worked extremely hard on this. He had kind, he took this project four years ago as his baby. And he has pushed it forward both with dollars that he's collected and his own money. And I think they have come up with a first-class facility as evidenced by the fact that we're going to have some pretty phenomenal games and a shot at a state tournament. And that's a big accomplishment. So I think it's money well-invested. And if you don't think it's fun recreation, you need to come sometime. And it's good for our kids to have a place to go and a team to be a part of and to represent our city. And I think we're doing it in a number-one fashion. So, thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Also, I echo the sentiments again about seeing the department heads. It's good to see you all here. And I know this is your time, but we appreciate you sharing it with us. And there may be some times when you want to ask questions and we need to ask you questions. Who better to ask than you? So, and that's my comment.
All righty. Well, I have a few quick comments. Welcome, John. And thank you, attendees tonight. It is nice to see the smiling faces over there. Some things that are going on, some new things. For one is Maurice McLaurin, Parks and Rec Director, has started a trial season of indoor soccer. And that signup is through this coming Monday at the water department. If anybody would like to sign their child up between ages of eight and 10, that is still ongoing. The Hamlet Senior Center is going to have their chili showdown. It is Friday, February 21st, starting at 11:00 a.m. Contact Amanda Kempin if you have questions. But it's my flyer, if it's still accurate, says 55 and above. And apparently, our previous winner was Chief Dennis Brown with the Hamlet Police Department. So, if you wanted to go head-to-head with him, I don't know if he's going to be in it again this year, but we'll see.
What's the date of what?
The 21st, February 21st.
Come to the podium, please.
Wednesday, February 26th.
Okay.
An email was sent out by our Community Engagements Director.
So, I mean, Wednesday, February 26th? But still at 11:00 a.m.?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, our downtown area, our engine and caboose are being painted this week, even in the rain because they're supposed to put a tent around it so that they can still work. And that will be a nice beautification project. And at the grants from the Foundation of the Carolinas to have that done, the sidewalks and visitor, at the visitor center in Depot have recently been pressure washed. So we're getting all of that area ready for our upcoming spring events, which the First Food Truck Friday is April 11th, from 11:00 to 7:00. And those will be every second and fourth Friday. And that's all I have. So, we need a motion to go into closed session for Attorney-client Personnel stuff.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?